Good evening. I think we have our chairs in order now. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form available at the entrance and presented to the City Clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. This time, I will convene the City Council and the success-- no, just the City Council meeting tonight for the City of Grand Terrace for August 27th, 22nd, 2017. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Community Outreach Lead Jordan Stantz of Sandals Church, and our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Mayor Pro Tem Robles. If you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the pledge. Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Mr. Stantz. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Reinars.
Present.
Councilmember Hussey.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson.
Hi, Mayor.
Pro Tem Robles.
Present.
Mayor Mcnebo.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. So we'll move to consent calendar since we have no special presentations tonight. And there was a change or an amendment to the agenda, and the City Clerk, I believe, left copies for us. I amended something that was in my statement, but Mr. Gallo also told me that there was a description of his employment that was incorrect, and he would like that amended. And I don't have it in front of me right now, but it said that he worked for a particular agency, and he actually worked with them.
That's correct. I will check on that for you.
On packet page 15, under item 14, it says Johann Gallo, Grand Terrace, worked for the National Center of Exploited Children, and Mr. Gallo said he worked with them and not for them.
I will make that change.
And in my comments for the community, I was talking about the community providing support for the family, not the Sheriff's Department. If my colleagues are okay with that, I'd like to make those amendments to the minutes. And then we need a ordinance read by title only before we vote on item number four.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, amending section 4.56.010, permit fee of chapter 4.56, street and parkway tree permits of title four, comprehensive fee schedules, fines and taxes, and amending section 12.28.140, maintenance and pruning, and section 12.32.060, trees and plants, to title 12, streets, sidewalks and public places of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code relating to street trees.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, we would like to pull item, this particular item.
All right. Well, thank you, Madam City Clerk. So item number four is being removed from the consent calendar, and so is-- I'll entertain a motion for the ballot. I move the consent calendar with the minutes amended and with the elimination of item number four.
Second.
All right. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Reinars, Hussey and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Robles voting yes, Mayor Mcnebo voting yes.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, are we pulling it to pull it, or is there a staff report to go out with?
We'd like to-- we have a staff report. We'd like to make an amendment to which would then make this the first reading again of this particular item.
Okay. So we will put that in unfinished business?
Madam Mayor, you can take it up at this time, or you can put it under unfinished business. Whatever is your pleasure.
All right. Let's just take care of it right now. May we have staff report, please?
Yes. And Mr. French will come up and give the report, but I just want to maybe that can be very brief on this. This ordinance was supposed to be rewritten to ensure that the property owners understood that they, for general maintenance of the trees, that they were going to get, need a permit, so we're trying to protect the trees. However, the way it's currently written, it limits the ability to address hazards and obstructions of streets and entryways into the sidewalks. So we want to make a slight change to this to allow the residents to be able to prune trees and bushes to address any hazards or any blockages of the public right of way, driveways and trees and, I'm sorry, driveways, streets and sidewalks. So Mr. French has the way it's currently written there, or is that, this is the modification?
This is going to be modified. Because the light, the lighting of the screen takes on whatever color.
Okay.
And what would happen?
Twenty-two?
That is, this is the ability to provide change. Just to highlight various changes where we have. The ability to, once again, you see what I'm saying?
And the next part that we've added is the end statement in regards to the permit not being required for the corrections. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to staff at this time? All right. See, none. I'll ask if there are any-- is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this item? All right. See, now I'll bring it back to my colleagues for consideration of a motion.
Madam Mayor, you have read by title only. That was not wasted. But the motion would be to reintroduce the ordinance as amended.
Okay. Me and my colleagues like to make that motion.
I'll move the recommendation as amended.
We have a motion, a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmembers Reinars, Hussey and Mayor Pro Tem Robles voting yes, Councilmembers Wilson and Mayor Mcnebo voting no.
All right. Thank you. We will move on to our consent-- oh, no. We just did our consent calendar. Doesn't feel like it. Public comment at this time, and this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the City Council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. Also, a brief response may be requested of staff to questions raised during public comment, or items may be requested for agendizing on a future meeting agenda. Are there any item, or any requests to speak during this time? Thank you. Our first speaker is David Laskowski.
Good afternoon. My name is David Laskowski. I'm the Neighborhood Watch Captain on Brentwood Street behind Terrace View Elementary. I come to you this afternoon to ask you to look into and address some possible safety concerns we have on that street. Currently, thank you for repaving our street. It was greatly appreciated and it looks great. Some concerns that we have with my neighbors is the speed humps are not properly marked anymore. It was hard to see them before with the yellow lines because they're faded, but now it just has a one single arrow. It's too late, and if you're out there having your coffee at night, you can see the sparks of people coming by and hitting them. Asking that the city would look into those very nice solar powered flashing lights that you have on that burn, possibly at the speed humps, and most importantly, where the children pass to the school. Also, the street signs on Brentwood Street are illegible and very low hazards for the children walking to school. I brought this up on a couple phone calls to the city about the street signs. I was told that in order to get those repaired, they were going to pave the street first and address the street signs. So I'm just hoping that now that that's been accomplished that we can address those issues. Most importantly, we have some, just to, it's the safety concerns of the children going to school. The speed on that street is horrible. So any input? Those are some suggestions from my neighbors, and Mr. Smith is with me as a neighbor representative, too, this afternoon, asking the City Council to look into this.
All right. Thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for your comments, Mr. Laskowski. Mr. City Manager, did you want to respond to that?
I was just-- [Inaudible]. And his car is going to be in conversation. There's one point of clarification I didn't want to ask, but you say the street sign. Do you mean the, do you mean the safety sign? Or do you mean the, the street names?
It's the notification that there are speed humps. They're illegible. Street signs are bent and faded out, and the speed limit.
The signs or the actual street, the name of the street?
The name of the street signs are just fine. It's the caution of being a hump, children crossing, things like that.
And how would you describe it?
All right. Thank you. Our next speaker is Reese Purdy.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, members of the City Council and those in attendance. My name is Reese Purdy, and I am a senior at Grand Terrace High School. This evening, I'd like to talk to you about a critical situation in the hometown we all love. Jop Hill is used daily by hundreds, perhaps thousands of drivers. During normal daytime hours, while greater improvements could still be made, the commute is relatively safe for both drivers and pedestrians. However, at night, it's a tragedy waiting to happen. It's dangerous for both drivers and pedestrians. There are only two lights near Jop Hill, one at the top by the stop sign and one at the bottom next to the church entrance. There are no lights anywhere in between, and quite frankly, it's a hazard to all of us. Last week, I was coming back up the hill from Walmart, and I thought I saw something in the street. This image to me had no distinguishable marks and wasn't noticeable even in my headlights. My gut told me to move to the left, and thankfully I did. I nearly missed hitting a young man dressed in dark black clothes who was completely hidden in the street. I'm thankful that today I can tell you this is a story of a near miss. It was me that avoided tragedy that evening, but under the current situation on the hill, how much longer will it be until someone else stands here mourning a victim of an accident that can easily be avoided? My request this evening is for all members of the council to obtain, consider and implement proposals from vendors to install both lighting for the hill and a walkway installed on the exterior of the guardrail that is also protected with fencing similar to that of a freeway overhead pass for pedestrians. During the day, you can easily see where to step, but at night, the thought of walking an unlit path on the other side of the rail is potentially more dreadful than being run down by a driver. At this time, I'm willing to take any questions from the panel.
Thank you, Ms. Purdy. I appreciate your comments, and thank you for being here. Mr. City Manager, did you want to make a comment at this time?
Yes, and I think that your comments are right on point. One of the things that, I think, half of that road, a majority of that road, actually belongs to the City of Colton, and so we need to work, we'll sit down, we'll work with the City of Colton, and we'll talk with our, we have representatives on what we call the Sandbag Board, or SBCTA. It's a regional group, and they have funding for projects like this, so we'll certainly be looking into this area. We'll get back to the council.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here tonight. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak during this time?
Sheriff McConnell, 21758 Waller Avenue. I'm curious about the, you know, all the activity down by the trestles that we talked about many times, and all the dumping. And a lot of that dumping gets placed on private property to the north of the end of Terrace Avenue. And I see Burt Tech down there, sometimes Grand Terrace Maintenance going down there and picking up stuff, and I'm just wondering why taxpayers are paying for private property, trash removal on private property instead of asking the property owner to put up a fence or something? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Mr. City Manager, would you like to respond to that?
I can certainly look at what the, what Burt Tech is doing. Usually, when we go out, we're responding, and if it's near the roadway, we will, we will collect it. If we don't collect it near the roadway, it's going to start piling up. But we certainly wouldn't want to go deep into someone's property and collect. We would certainly call the property owner and have them do that. So we'll check it out, and I'll work with Public Works and Community Development to find out what's going on there.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during this time? All right. Seeing no takers, I'll close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for their communications, and we'll start with Councilmember Brian Reinars.
Thank you, Mayor. All I have tonight is the sign ordinance. I would like to have a discussion on the sign ordinance, specifically the fee involved, if we could put that forward for another meeting. I would like to discuss that. I haven't been able to discuss that yet, and I know we can't say much about it tonight. It's not on an agenda. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Hussey.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. A couple things. One is a request on citizens on patrol need help. They're looking for volunteers. And I talked to Mr. Duffy, who was going to get on our city website so you could pull the application up, but it's a great way to serve your community and also help prevent crime. And I guess you guys get, they get a nice little uniform and all that, too, and get to drive around. But it's a great cause, and they're looking for volunteers. So if you're interested, you can get with the, on our city website, or just email me and we'll send you the information. Also, I attended the Grand Terrace High School Community Event. I want to thank all the volunteers who put that together. And there are a couple over here in the audience, and then I'd like to thank Assembly Member, Ms. Reyes. He also came out to the event, but once again, Friday Night Lights are going to be in full force, and also there's other high school activities going on. There's volleyball and tennis, just to name a few, and plus, a shout out, we can't forget the band, because the band really rallies everybody together. So get ready for a lot of events happening on Friday night and throughout the week on, at the high school. And also, I want to remind residents that we have dinner in the community with the Sheriff's Department, and it's going to be this Thursday at 6:30 at Azure Hills at the small fellowship hall. So Lieutenant Wilk's going to be there, and he's going to give us insight, you know, what the sheriff's doing and how the residents here can help the Sheriff's Department to help prevent crime in our little city. You know, we're the first line of defense, too. We're here working with the sheriff, so we need, I'll be involved. And if you come, I guess Lieutenant Wilk's going to, the Sheriff's Department's going to serve dinner that night. Is that right? And one other thing, also, Mr. Duffy, you know, talked about the commercial parking throughout the city. I, too, would like to bring that up, because one of the problems that I'm seeing is we have a vehicle parked over by the fire department's road, and I'm worried about that being a safety hazard over there for them to get out of blind spot. But I'd like to bring that up on the community to see what we could do about limiting or not having any commercial parking throughout the city. And that's all I have. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. God bless. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Councilmember Doug Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing for this evening.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Mayor Pro Tem, Sylvia Robles.
This is very quickly. I did have an Ametranz Administrative Committee meeting, but I'll hold the remarks until the full board acts on them. Also, I went to the soccer opening and enjoyed it, even though it was very, very hot. But you have to really give kudos to the parents for their commitment to their kids. It's, I know it's a lot of expense, and it was a nice event. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. I have two SBCTA, that's San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, meetings that I attended. First one was their General Policy Committee, and so we looked at administrative matters and received June and July procurement reports, as well as Measure I receipts. What has been received so far for Measure I, and Measure I is the tax that we pay on gasoline that goes to local roads, but it also funds highways and some of our grade separations. So they're looking at 2010 through 2040. 2040 is the end of that particular measure. We also looked at administrative matters with respect to the Measure I passed through compliance audits for the City of Adelanto. So each city that has, that uses their funds has to submit to an audit to make sure that they are reporting correctly and that they are using their funds as, as they are allowed to. We recommend that the board change the flexible benefits plan, and mostly that's to reflect the name of the organization that has changed. We also recommended that they approve a budget amendment to fiscal year 1718, and this would be an increase for structural engineering services needed for the San Bernardino-Santa Fei Depot basement repair. This is the building that SBCTA and a number of other organizations meeting, as well as the depot. And it is a historical building, and so it has a basement, although most of our buildings don't have basements. And they're finding the need to actually do something to shore up that basement as it is today. We looked at receiving information on the status of electrical vehicle charging infrastructure projects at San Bernardino County Transportation Authority's parking lot, the Metro Lake Station and the Transit Center. We also looked at and recommended to the board that they approve a pilot program that will extend the freeway service to weekends along highway areas where most are needed. These are the tow trucks that roam the freeways, and they help stranded motorists. And the reason that that program is in place is to help to alleviate the track that is caused by motorists that are broken down and don't have a way to move their vehicles. And so there are certain areas of the freeway that could use the service on the weekends, and so they will be doing a five, or recommending they do a five-year trial period in those areas. We recommended that the board receive the August 20, August 2017 state and federal legislative update. These are the bills that the SBCTA watches that specifically have to do with transportation funding at the state and federal level. We also had the Metro Valley Study Session, and this was on August 10. We combined not just the Metro Valley Study Session, which is the larger projects within the, the San Bernardino transit area, but we also had the Transit and Rail Committee items combined. And we received and filed, or we recommended to the board that they receive and file a change order report for both the delivery, project delivery for transit and the large projects. We received the fourth quarter right-of-way grants use report. We reviewed and recommended for final approval by the Board of Directors. An amendment to the Cooperative Agreement with the City of Ontario, and this is an agreement that gives authority to acquisition of property necessary for the Archibald Avenue Improvement Project at State Route 60. Under air quality traveler services, we recommended, excuse me, we received information and recommended that the board approve a rideshare pilot project opportunity with Loma Linda University Medical Center. We reviewed and recommended for final approval by the board, a number of other items. Some of them were enterprise rideshare van pool leasing services, and then a marketing and branding campaign for that van pool program, an update to the Measure I 2010-2040 strategic plan, a contract with Southern California Regional Rail Authority for the design and construction support for the Eastern Maintenance Facility and Downtown San Bernardino Passenger Rail Project. We recommended the advanced conceptual engineering for the Montclair segment of the Metro Gold Line Foothill Extension Project. We recommended the approval of addendums one, two and three to the Redlands Passenger Rail Project, the WSPSA Agreement Amendment for Construction of Management Services on the Eastern Maintenance Facility Project, Downtown San Bernardino Passenger Rail Project, and the awarding of a contract to AMMA Transit Planning for the development of a low-carbon transit operations program, transit marketing and fare subsidy services. We also received information on the long-range transit plan. But the fun part was going to the soccer opening ceremonies here in town and the Grand Terrace Titans Community Kickoff. Those were wonderful examples of our community coming together to put together programs for our children and to see the involvement of the parents in activities for their youth. So I was very, very honored to be invited to those. I was also honored to attend the Eagle Court of Honor for Ash Randawa of Troop 40. Our council signed a commendation for him, but I actually was invited to his Court of Honor, so I presented that on behalf of the council and the city. Very nice ceremony. And our Troop 40 really has some amazing young men that, that end up going through their program. We have a phenomenal number of Eagle Scouts that come through that program. It's just amazing. And then the last thing I attended was the-- And then, the last thing I attended was the First Annual San Bernardino County Economic Forecast with Dr. Christopher Thornburg. He's out of the UCR Center for Economic Forecasting, and they've been doing an economic forecast in Riverside County. They now realize, after eight years of doing that, that, hey, we need to, we need to focus on San Bernardino County, because really, we are looking at the entire Inland Empire. And so just the three takeaways from his presentation, is that the Inland Empire job growth is outpacing the state. So the Inland Empire is 2.7% increase compared to 1.7% for the state. The demand for housing in the Inland Empire has fueled the strongest construction activity here in nearly a decade. And business activity in the Inland Empire has grown for 21 straight quarters. He had a lot of positive information about our particular area of the county, as well as the Inland Empire, and it's nice that they are focusing their efforts there. And that will end my report. So we will move on to public hearings, of which we have one tonight. So to speak at the public hearing, it will be much the same. If you would please fill out a request-to-speak form and give it to the city clerk. Each person will be allowed three minutes to address the city council. And if you challenge in court any action taken concerning a public hearing item, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised during the public hearing that's described in this notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, have we received any written?
We did receive one letter.
Okay. And do we have that with us on the dais?
It is in your packet.
Okay. So the way that we will move forward with this is we will have, we will open the public hearing. We will talk about the written communication. City council and question, will have questions of the, of the staff after their report. We will hear any applicant's comments. We will hear discussions from the public in favor or in opposition of the item. If necessary, the applicant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal. So the applicant's comments will not be limited to three minutes. However, in this case, we are asking the speakers to be, to limit their comments to three minutes. And the rebuttal will not be limited to three minutes. If there is one, we will close the public hearing, and the city council will deliberate on the item. Tonight, we're hearing, we are opening the public hearing relating to the adoption of the residential and commercial solid waste and recycling rate increases. So I will open the public hearing at this time. Have my colleagues had a chance to find the written communication?
It's page, back to page 44.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, would you read this into the record, please?
To whom it may concern, I am protesting the proposed adjustments. Why? Glad you ask. I'll tell you why. I'm a senior of 72 years, so far. I'm on a fixed income. Does that mean anything? If I could work, I would. Why is it us seniors have to suffer? Isn't electricity way overcharged, isn't overcharging us? I'm sorry, I'm old and wish I could live out my days in peace. I'm non-vet, like that's going to mean anything? All I'm asking is seniors need help. Suicide is out of the question. I refuse to hurry up and die. And I believe that's thank you much, Zeke. P.S. We didn't get a raise for last three years, and I see none worth mentioning next few years. Did you get a raise?
All right. Thank you. And there are no more written comments, so we will move to staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmembers. Alan French, Public Works. Here to present this item to you, which is the public hearing for the Refuge Rate Adjustment. This item supports the goal of 2030, number one, fiscal viability by ensuring appropriate costs and recovery for services. The city has a contract with a refuge hauler, which is BRTech, and refuge rates are typically tied to consumer price indexes, which also affect cost and delivery, as well as landfill, landfill fees. BRTech has performed an analysis for these rates. They haven't adjusted rates since 2015. And at that time, a rate was introduced on the rather larger rate, and the council asked them not to wait so long for the next rate increase, because it was such a large amount. So at this time, they're proposing to come back with this rate increase. The notices have been sent out to 3,664 residents and commercial users, according to the Prop 218 requirements. Without a majority protest, staff is asking council to consider and pass the adjustment. One of the vice presidents for BRTech, Mike Aragon, is here, if there are questions for them. At this time, if the council has any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. French. Does the council have any questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Hesse.
So, am I reading this right? We're going to, for a 96-gallon cart service, it was going to go from $23.85 to $23.98. And then for the 64-gallon, we go from $22.56 to $22.61. So we're a little over a dime on one and under, a little under a dime on the other, right? Do we have, if we have citizens on fixed incomes and low incomes, I know a lot of the utility companies have programs for those citizens. Is there any way, I don't know, I don't know if it goes with the trash can. I know it goes with, you know, public utilities as far as gas and electric. But is there any way, if we do have something like that, we get BRTech to assist these citizens? You know, if the 12 cents is going to, you know, hurt them, you know, even the lower, lower than $23. If we do, can we get it on our city website, too, where our city staff can also help them, assist them in filling out this paperwork, and then do the proper channels with BRTech?
Yes, Sir Councilman. We could definitely assist them in filling out paperwork. I would have to defer to BRTech if they have that program. Those programs are usually done by the utility company, not necessarily the agency that they're living in, or the jurisdiction they're living in. Mike, do you want to speak to that? If they have programs?
Mayor, Mike comes down. May I make a comment?
City Manager?
Yes, thank you. So one of the things that we would normally do with the potential rate increases, you would ask the citizen, you look at the service rates. What the city's done over the years is they provide a smaller container. So as you see in this particular case, the rate for a 94, a 96-gallon container is $1.56 annually. But the rate for a smaller 64-gallon increases only 60 cents. So one of the things we need to do first is to find out what size container this resident has, and they could save a lot more by moving to a smaller container. And then, I'll let Mike.
Mr. Aragon.
Well, you've, you hit it right on the nail on the head. Mike Aragon, Vice President with BRTech Waste Industries. We do have a variable can rate in the city right now, and that is the 96 and the 65. And the main difference between the rates, because from, as you all know, from a service standpoint, the same truck, same driver, and all the same service costs go forward, whether they're collecting a 35-gallon can or a 95-gallon can. The difference is in the disposal and the volume that's picked up. So there are savings, and those savings are based on the disposal. We have, I think, in the past, had rates that would reflect a senior rate. And there have been issues in many cities where those tend to be not looked upon or preferential. So what we have done to combat that is have these adjustable rates based on size of container. And they're available to anybody, not just seniors. So those, those are, that's how we've approached the issue. We have the 65-gallon container here in the city. There is a smaller container, and if, and if the city is interested in looking at that in the future, that's something that we can inventory and provide that as well. But I'm happy to answer any other questions with regard to the rate as well, if you have them, or if not. I thank you very much.
Any questions of Mr. Aragon? All right. Thank you so much for your time. Any questions of staff? All right. If not, I will open that up to the public for their comments. Oh, come on up, please. And if you would step to the lectern and...
All right, very, very good. My name is T. Leon Berry. I've been a resident of Grand Terrace for a number of years. And I'm here this evening to speak against raising the rates. And I think I've heard, you know, someone say that the reason, you know, you all are taking consideration of people that are on fixed incomes, and with all the new things, the new ways of creating monies for government and for things like that, like raising the gas, price of gas, you know, adding, you know, stuff to my water bill, you know, it's out of hand. I mean, you know, I know, you know, you all need money to run the city, but, but, you know, we got to keep the city safe. We got to keep the city in line and conducive, you know, where people like myself, who is retired, you know, can afford to live here. You know, because, you know, and then it's sort of like, you know, you know, the water crisis, you know, that water bill went up and it didn't come down. And, and, you know, and I've been, what, I'm a part of the water company. I had, you know, no real say-so. I know I'm jumping around, but what, but, but I have to jump around, because there being, one thing builds on another thing, and that is, you all, you all, the city, the government, will have to stop squeezing the small person, you know, that's getting $700 a month, you know, you know. And, and, and all, and what happens, I end up, you know, eating less, you know, you know. I end up paying, you know, totally more, you know, than the, what, the $3, the $3, or whatever you're going to raise it. I can't afford it. I'm asking you all to consider, you know, that Santa, I mean, Grand Terrace, Grand Terrace, needs some consideration for people like myself that's been here a long time and that we love this city, but, but we can't afford if you all keep generating and creating ways to raise funds, you know, at my expense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. I appreciate you taking the time to come and, and say those words to us. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak during this time?
Jeff McConnell, 21758 Walnut Avenue. Now, I heard you, Mr. BRTech staff, explain about the smaller containers, but I've only seen the black smaller containers. I don't know if they have smaller containers for blue and for green. And specifically referring to the seniors that are complaining, you know, those big containers, they get heavy, even if they're empty, for an elderly person. I'm an avid recycler, reuse, reinvent, repurpose, and I don't hardly fill up my blue container halfway after three weeks. It's, it's just, I think it's just too big, and I can handle it. But I'm sure that, this is Bowler next door, who's an elderly frail little lady. It's hard for her to move those trash cans. So I'm sure it's difficult for others. So I just want, maybe you can come and explain. Are there other smaller containers for the blue and the green also? And does that affect the price, et cetera, et cetera? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during this time? Okay. So you know takers. Mr. Aragon, would you tell us a little bit more about those smaller containers that you mentioned? That we don't currently have?
Yes, the, the smaller container is a 35-gallon container. And generally, there is some savings. A lot of times, the amount of savings versus the volume or the capacity that you might have in a 65 or 95, most people feel that that's, you know, not enough of a, of a break. And again, the break is based on the capacity or the volume of trash that is out there. If there are seniors and/or disabled or handicapped individuals that need assistance with any size container, we offer free pullout and setback of those containers by our, by our drivers. So I'd like to make sure that that's put out there for the residents of Grand Terrace as well. But outside of that, if that is something that the council would like us to look into, develop a rate for the city, we can bring that back as well and include that at any point in time that you would like us to, if you'd like us to offer that level of service, if you feel it's necessary. We do, from an inventory standpoint, I would have to bring in containers, and whether I have two that's delivered or 202. But we'd be willing to do that and create that. I'd work with, with the Public Works Department and create that rate, if that's something the city would like to do, in addition to what is being presented here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Aragon.
Thank you.
I have a question.
All right, Mayor Pro Tem.
Well, just two people in my household, I, we inquired about the smaller...
Proceed early, I'm going to ask you to hold that. Shall I close public comment first before we do this?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The, the way this process works, if you received a majority of the ratepayers objecting to the increase before the close of the public hearing, which you're about to do, then you wouldn't be able to act on the increase. However, it appears that you've only received two.
Okay. All right. Shall I close public comment before we can, we have discussion, or? All right. So at this time, I will close the public hearing, and I will come back to Mayor Pro Tem for her comments.
Yeah, so how I felt was the two times a year the kids come over, or we have guests, and I exceed that gallon, I felt like that was breaking my, my, my agreement. So I didn't go with it. But, you know, typically, it's, and I see for us in the near future, dealing with those gallons. So I would just want to say, how would we treat if you do have us getting smaller ones, and then we, we have overcapacity? I mean, is it like, if it's twice a year, it's negligible, or what's the fair thing here?
That's a, that's a very good question, and it does apply to all the services. First and foremost, regardless of the size container that you have, twice a year, it's generally the Thanksgiving period and Christmas. If residents have excess amounts that would normally go into their trash containers, we pick up that excess if the bags are set alongside of those containers. On occasion, if you have a party, or you have a guest that come over, and it's a, and it's a very, you know, as I say, on rare occasions, and you have that excess trash, just call us at least a day ahead of your collection time, so that it alerts the driver. We send him a note and put those extra, that extra trash alongside your container in a bag. But I would, you know, I'm saying this publicly, but we have to know. We can't just arbitrarily just put extra bags of trash, or it'll be tagged and left. So if we know that that's the case, we'll document your account, and we will pick up that, that trash. If, if the calls for that excess collection come in more frequently, then we are going to suggest that you, you get a larger container, because it seems that that, that tends to be the need. So it's not that you can't and you don't have to, to have a larger container all year long just so that you can have capacity for those rare times where you have excess trash, because we'll pick that up for you.
Thank you, Mr. Aragon. I appreciate your answers.
Anything, Mayor? For clarification? For clarification, um...
Yes, public hearing has been closed.
Now, if the city manager would, or the, the city attorney would explain that we don't get money for this, this is just a fee?
Yes, uh, Madam Mayor, members of the council, uh, what we're doing is recovering the costs that we pay Bertec to pick up the refuse, the city doesn't get any of that money.
Again, we're looking at a, what, ten per, ten cent increase? Five cents?
Oh, I, I apologize, the, the city manager did point out, we do get a franchise fee.
Hmm.
But that's not before you tonight.
All right. Um, any, any comments from my colleagues? All right. If there's somebody that would, um, has an opinion about this, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I move, um, adoption of resolution number two seventeen, setting forth new solid waste and recycle rate adjustments.
Second?
The motion and second, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with council members Reinars, Hesse, Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, Mayor McNabbel voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to unfinished business, and it has been requested that we move our last item of unfinished business, which is the ordinance to repeal chapter nine point three two, regulation of registered sex offenders, to the first item of business in unfinished business. Did we miss something? Did I miss something? It's, um, actually packet page one thirty-nine, item nine, and it's been requested that we move that, move it up, up. Okay. So if we could please have a staff report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, uh, this item was brought to you last week, uh, I mean, last meeting, and it's, uh, concerning the repeal of chapter nine point three two, which is a regulation of registered sex offenders, uh, that is in the municipal code. Uh, at the last meeting, the council considered, um, this ordinance for, um, introduction. After, after some discussion, the council, uh, requested that our office bring some information with regard to Jessica's Law, which is Penal Code, uh, three double oh, three point five, uh, which has restrictions concerning, uh, sex offenders. And also, uh, it was a recommendation of, uh, Councilmember Reinars that we prepare a comparison chart with what Jessica's Law has, which we've labeled up on the chart as state law, and then what your local, uh, provisions have, which is a section that we have up for repealing. And the reason for the repealing, uh, or the, uh, recommendation to repeal is that the, um, there's been a number of court cases striking down, uh, uh, these extra provisions that municipal, uh, entities have, uh, added on to Jessica's Law. And it's our opinion that, uh, this, uh, the chapter nine point three two, um, has a significant, uh, risk of being challenged, and you have received a letter from, uh, an attorney who has threatened that challenge. So, that being said, I've asked Mr. Keith Collins from my office to come tonight, and that was another reason why we moved it up, so he wouldn't be paying for two attorneys for too long. And, uh, he prepared this comparison chart for you, is prepared to answer any questions. Um, there are other slides, if you find that too difficult to read, of course, it is in your packet, uh, uh, let's see, what packet page number is, oh, there it is, one forty-two. Uh, we have slides with, uh, that, uh, chart broken into with, uh, with, uh, that is easier to read. But, uh, at any rate, uh, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we're open to answer any questions concerning this.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Adams. Are there questions for staff at this time? Councilmember Reinars, did you have questions regarding the table that was put together?
No, it's very well done, it's clear.
All right, thank you. You have comment, Councilmember Hesse?
Yeah, thank you for the table that was prepared, you know, it's, it's, I'm glad, uh, Council, Councilmember Reinars, you know, brought it to, uh, to our attention. Like I said before, my only concern is, we're a council, and we were voted in to make, you know, pass city ordinance, so, and then, I feel like, you know, personally, that this is still getting thrown at us, and you need to do it so we don't get a, a lawsuit, so that's just my comment.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Collins, did you wanna say anything?
No, I just appreciate the compliment. I prepared this chart, and I'm glad it was informative for you.
Okay. Seeing no more comments or questions from staff, I will open up public comment. Are, do we have any requests to speak on this item? Nope. Is there anyone here tonight wishing to speak on this item? All right, seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I'll move the item and have the clerk read it.
All right, I have a motion, is there a second?
Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, finding that this ordinance is exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act and repealing Grand Terrace Municipal Code, Chapter nine point three two, Regulation of Registered Sex Offenders of Title Nine, Public Peace, Morals and Welfare relating to Sex Offenders.
Okay. So I have a motion, and we've read the title, is there a second at this time? All right. Looks like this motion, this item dies for lack of a second.
You know, you were elected to do your job. This is getting quite old.
What does this mean?
What it means is, we're now exposed to a lawsuit. That's what it means.
We are representing the community that we live in, I don't think that's a problem.
I think, uh, there's a number of items that have come before this council in the past few months, that there's been a failure on this body for people to do their job.
Okay. Any other comments at this time?
Yes, there's a comment on this, is that... If the attorney would please come up and explain how this violates the constitutional rights, and what decisions...
So, there were residents in the County of San Diego, for example, there were several suits, but the, the preeminent case was a case coming from San Diego that was brought by, uh, parolees who were subject to San Diego County's local restrictions, which further restricted where they could live. And the court analyzed the effect of these restrictions on their constitutional rights to live, and to work, and to, um, participate in, in our society. And the court found that the restrictions imposed by the County of San Diego, um, prevented them from, from functionally living within that jurisdiction, and that it actually frustrated the purpose of the regulations regarding residencies and, uh, monitoring of registered sex offenders. And so for that reason, the, the court struck down those local ordinances as unconstitutional violations of their civil rights.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Madam Mayor, if I may, um...
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you. Um, Keith, could you also advise them, uh, if, if someone were to challenge this ordinance and was successful in, in, in court, as they were in San Diego, what would be the consequences to the city?
So when, when somebody brings a lawsuit for violation of their civil rights, they bring it under, uh, United States Code in Section nineteen eighty-three, which gives the person who prevails in that action the right to collect their attorney's fees from the opposing party. So in the event that a lawsuit is brought against the City of Grand Terrace alleging that its local ordinance is unconstitutional, and it prevails, the city would be required, most likely, because they're going to ask for their fees, um, for those legal costs in addition to the city's fees.
Councilmember Hesse, you have a comment?
Well, that was pretty much my comment, I mean, what is it gonna cost those taxpayers to fight this ordinance if we do it? And, pretty much, I already went to court, and it, they lost. So either way, the, the taxpayers are gonna be paying for our decision tonight. You know, and my thing was, you know, the only thing that really gets me, like I said, we were voted in to, uh, just have it represent the, the residents, and you know, this is what I'm getting for the residents, but I also don't wanna waste money on frivolous lawsuits either. Um, so, the, do you have any guesstimation what it would cost?
It, it, it could be as high as a hundred thousand dollars.
All right. And we could use a hundred thousand for something else?
Uh, these, these civil rights litigation cases can go on and on. They can be appealed, they can drag on for years, and, and a hundred thousand dollars is a very rough ballpark.
Okay. Well, with that, Madam Mayor, I motion a second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments?
Yes, um, I think we need to...
Mayor Protem?
Um, we have this chart for reasons. What's, on the state law, on residency, what is substantially different from, from what the state law is, and the local enhancement of the law?
Um, as you can see in the chart, the, the state law does not regulate personal conduct, which basically means that the registered sex offender, under state law, is not prohibited from going into places where children regularly gather. That's where the city's local ordinance would kick in to provide additional restrictions on registered sex offenders. And so, those bottom two boxes in the bottom right-hand corner of the chart is, is what the city would be, would be losing by repealing this ordinance.
Now, when you're saying non-parolee, in, in, that means they've fulfilled all of the, uh, crimino, um, convictions, probation, served time, everything?
Uh, there are several reasons why a, a registered sex offender would not be on parole. They, they might never, never have been on parole in the first place, but, but generally, yes, they, they will have been released from prison and discharged from parole, um, but the requirement that they register as a sex offender could last even further.
Now, is that because, for, for example, I'm reading up with this, there was a, uh, an incident in the state of Oregon where, um, a young man, um, was about fourteen, and he offended. Uh, he did his, um, counseling, he did, um, his probationary period and all that. And because he had to, uh, be registered, um, the argument was that he has no longer re-offended. And yet, the public pressure was that, uh, people found out about this, and so he was gonna be picked up by a major, um, baseball league, and they, they, um, declined the offer. So what I'm trying to get is, from what I'm reading in the literature, and I didn't know this was gonna be such a problem, because this was brought forth to us in closed session, and there didn't seem to be this, this much, um, concern about it. So, there are other protections. I mean, just, they just can, so, they can just go into a school, but they have to have a reason to be there, right? I mean...
Are we, are we talking about parolees or registered sex offenders?
Registered sex offenders.
Yes. So, if you look at the state law, the top left corner, um, I'm sorry, no, that statute does not apply to, uh, when they wanna enter a school. There are other state statutes, yes, that, that apply when the registered sex offender perhaps is the legal guardian or the parent of a minor that attends the school, and there are some exceptions in the state law that do allow them to conduct lawful business at a place where children regularly gather.
So they have to have a, a, an interest, you know?
Yes.
Well, except that in your table, you said that, that there is none, with respect to needing to be a guardian or a parent, or a reason...
So Jessica's Law has several different related statutes. I limited this chart to just these that mirrored Grand Terrace's local ordinance.
Mm-huh.
And so those restrictions would be in a different, uh, statute section of the penal code. Mayor?
Councilmember Reinars?
Well, our schools are closed campuses, so right now, I can't go onto a school in Grand Terrace, having no record, so it's not like we're just gonna see people wandering on our campuses and looking at children. These are closed campuses, and you can't get onto these schools without going through the office, if that's kinda what we're getting at here. The concern, I think, would be the parks, which are open, but the Supreme Court, this is settled law now, correct?
Uh, no, it wasn't the Supreme Court, it was the, uh, Court of Appeal.
The Court of Appeal?
Yes.
Okay.
In California?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes with councilmembers Reinars, Mayor Protem Robles, Mayor McNabbel voting yes, councilmembers Hesse and Wilson voting no.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, gentlemen, for putting the onus on us.
All right, so we are back to our agenda as it was. Item number six is the next one on unfinished business. Grand Terrace Park and Recreation Committee bylaws. Okay, we have staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, although I've spoken in the past, I want, for the record, G. Harold Duffy, the city manager. Um, what I have before the council tonight is the Grand Terrace Park Recreation Committee, uh, bylaws that are attached. On Ju, on July twenty-fifth, two thousand and seventeen, the council, the City Council of Grand Terrace approved Resolution number twenty seventeen dash twenty-three to reestablish the Park and Recreation Committee. The, and the, the exhibit, A, Resolution defines the generation purposes of the committee, and also states that the city council shall approve general policy guidelines, and that's what the council has before them today. Uh, staff developed the general guidelines for the count, for the Gr, Grand Terrace Park and Recreation Committee, uh, in an effort to clarify the mission of the Parks Commission. So there are a couple of things that wanted to talk about here regarding the, the bylaws. One is to, one of the core, core responsibilities include reviewing the existing park assessment plan, which is attached. Also, it is to make recommendations, um, to the council on facility and program improvement of the parks, and also the goal is to increase recreational activities within the existing park infrastructure. Uh, these guidelines are, uh, a starting point. Council may want to add or take away any of the guidelines throughout the, the process. Uh, also, part of the regulations also include, uh, some things like, uh, statements of purpose, uh, also to provide recommendations to the council relative to parks and recreation, to, uh, solicit citizens' opinions and input, uh, in conjunction with city staff request information from, and consult with organizations, special interest groups, neighborhood associations, and other professional, uh, professions and/or existing park assessment plan, or ideas for new park projects. Also, to make recommendations to the city council for the implementation of the existing park assessment plan, as I mentioned earlier. Um, so, you have the bylaws before you, and one of the important things is it also provides an avenue for citizens, as, as special interest groups, to look at, uh, existing parks in the recreation plan, and also to be a venue for, uh, the, uh, residents' desires and wants for additional or new parks within the city, um, of Grand Terrace. So with that, I have, if I'm available for any questions, Mayor and Council.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. Are there any questions of staff at this time? All right. Seeing no questions, I will open it up to public comment. Are there any requests to speak on this item? Is there anybody in the public tonight that would like to speak on this item? Seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I'll make the motion that staff recommend, oh, that's not the motion. City council adopt the Grand Terrace Park and Recreation Committee bylaws. And which... Is that it?
That's a good motion. It's a strong motion.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Reinars, Hesse, Wilson... Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Reinars, Hesse, Wilson voting yes, Mayor Proton Robles voting yes, Mayor McDebo voting yes.
All right, thank you. We'll move to item eight, which is use of excess redevelopment bond proceeds. May we have staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor, and if I just might just make one comment about that last particular item. The council resolution requires, allows each council member to appoint a member to the Parks and Recreation Committee. And so I will be in touch with the council members to get those recommendations. And then I will come back with a report that identifies the membership body for that Park and Recreation Committee.
All right, thank you.
Okay, onward. Mayor and council, on August 8th, 2017, staff presented a list of potential projects which could be funded by the $289,000 of excess redevelopment bond funds. So this is really an update on that particular program. What I've done, this PowerPoint, you have copies of the PowerPoint, it is a representation of some new slides and then the existing slides from the last meeting. My intent is not to go over those existing slides, but to give you an update and kind of give you a breakdown, but I can certainly go over as you guys have any questions. So the history, in February 2012, the Redevelopment Disillusionment Act of ABX 126 ended redevelopment, and Grand Terrace had bond proceeds of about $18 million. Grand Terrace couldn't use those bond proceeds, and on September 2015, the Disillusion Act was amended by Senate Bill 107, allowing agencies to use 5% of the bond proceeds. So the city was able to use about $289,000. And in addition to that, there's also an additional 15% will be available in January of 2018 for about $2 million, $2.4 million. So that chart should... There we go. $2 million, $2.4 million. So what the staff's initial recommendation was review the categories and the projects that were listed before you. We are not committing any funds. Once again, this was just a list of projects that we were working on that were eligible for the bond proceeds. And so we wanted to bring those items before you, and what that will allow staff to do, that will allow us, based on your input, to prioritize the items and bring them forward for you to have more individual assessment. Also provides feedback on potential projects and funding opportunities, like I said. Okay, so project categories. What I did was, based on the comments from the last meeting, I broke these down into three particular categories. The first category really is projects that were funded already, and they are, then next is projects with immediate quality of life impacts, based on your comments. That means that you have comments that, if I take those comments and apply those to particular projects that you talked about, they would have significant impacts, like tree landscape, repairs sidewalks, immediate things. And the next item was just projects with little feedback, but they also have other funding sources, so we'll bring those back to the council too. So let's start off with the first category, projects funded. So this is a list. So initially, the council, I think back in June, committed the $50,000 to the dog park. And then at the last meeting, we had a separate council item for childcare playground maintenance, and the council approved that item. So there were two individual actions that the council conducted that led to an expenditure of about $80,000 in those redevelopment bond proceeds. So the next category was projects with immediate quality of life impacts. So these projects were the Barton-Honey Hill Landscape, that's $15,000. Remember the slides that I used the last time? It showed the three corners of Honey Hill and Barton Road that had significant landscape improvements, and it showed one corner that had not. And that's one of the interventions that the city, so the discussion was that that might be a great way to use those funds that were eligible to improve that area. Next was the tree replacement program. We, last year, when the city conducted its tree maintenance program, the first thing we did was to remove dead and dangerous trees. But we didn't replace those trees. And so one of the things that's eligible is to replace those trees. If we come back to the council, the council approves that, there'd be about 100 trees that we removed that we would replace. Then we had sidewalk repair. We did sidewalk repair last year, about $32,000. There are other sidewalk repairs that we're finding out about now, and so if we come back with the council, we estimate that cost to be around $20,000. And then we had a healthy discussion about Richard Rollins Park and park rehab. One of the things we talked about was the play structures and wood chips. And I got a very clear marching orders that I was not to bring back anything with wood chips as an improvement. And so that, when I bring those items back, I'll bring that back for an alternative to wood chips. And that total for those projects would have the direct impact would be about $149,000. The next item categories, projects with little feedback but with other funding sources. Now, I did want to say this about these particular projects, these projects are... Oh, I got a question.
Could you wrap it up, please?
Okay, I'll wrap it up, okay. So these projects have little feedback, but they can come back as an individual project or combined with other projects as we move forward in the future. These projects included bus stop, terminal improvements, $50,000. Palm Barton Road digital billboard, that one's not coming back for any improvement. That was also a pretty healthy conversation. If you see the chart too, it talks about other funding sources that you could use, the 15% RDA bond proceeds, park impact fees, grants external agencies, and developer impact fees. There was also the business facade program, $100,000. The library expansion, community center concept plan. We talked about how to best utilize the space that we have here for either park, community center, just maximizing the space here at the City Hall complex. Charging stations, vehicle charging, $20,000. Urban greening matching grant, that was $65,000. Veterans park, basketball court improvements, that was $50,000. Mobile bleachers, oh, I like those mobile bleachers, they're $40,000. They're kind of neat. City entrance signs, Main Street and Barton and Washington, $30,000. So that list of projects is about a total of $420,000. But you see, there's multiple funding sources that are available if you don't fund any of those with the particular projects. Also, the mayor asked one question, I think the mayor, maybe councilmembers asked one question, and that was about the ability for the city to purchase ALPR cameras with the redevelopment bond proceeds. And legal did some research and determined that, yes, you can purchase ALPR cameras. And Lieutenant Wolf, through discussion, said that the best location for those would be around the high school on Main Street in Michigan for outgoing, ingoing, we'll come back to that later. Westbound, $420,000 was that total list. So based upon the comments that we received, we would come back to the council with about a recommendation of about $229,000 in projects. Those, as I said before, we're not asking for any commitment for any funds, the project would come back individually. But you've already spent about $80,000 for the dog park and also childcare playground maintenance program. And so with that information, I have a number here. The total list of projects in which we brought forward to the council, this total list, is about $649,000. But what we have here, earmarked here, is basically bringing back projects for about $229,000, which would leave the council, and once again, it's all open, but there's about $60,000 if the council eventually came back and approved each one of these items for a total of $229,000. So with that, Mayor and council, I am available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Duffy. Questions, Mr. Duffy at this time. Councilmember Hesse.
Mr. Duffy, what about what the young lady brought up as far as safety on the hill, kind of Mount Vernon? You know, as far as, you know, street light stuff, can we use some of those bond funds for that? I mean...
You certainly can, and one of the things that I keep mentioning is that that 15% bond proceeds really is probably going to have a more significant impact. But one of the first things to do that we need to do is we need to sit down with the city of Colton and really kind of do an assessment of that area, because it is very dark and street light safety is very important. And we also need to be able to, if we can come up with a joint project, maybe we can get it funded through SBCTA or even look at our bond fund. You know, with solar lights these days, we maybe have some quick opportunities. But certainly, not only is the lighting issue, but also the side of the slope and the side of the hills is a significant issue that we've been trying to talk about with Colton. And it is probably a significant project that we need to really focus in on.
That and the sidewalk, because I've seen a young lady with a stroller walking her kids, and people fly up and down that hill, you know, so, you know.
Absolutely.
That's a good thing she brought up. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Mayor Proton?
I'm just thinking that we have $60,000, because this gets really confusing to me. We had an item that said kind of prioritize some stuff, and I had asked, because it was substantially different than the noticed agenda, that it come back for some further discussion. And so what you have told me in a private meeting is that, you know, many of these things can be funded elsewhere. But, because I think, what I'm thinking is, I'd like to tie it down a little bit more, because if my peers are amenable to deciding on a basketball court or mobile bleachers, those, you know, seem high up on the list of things that we need. Because I'd hate to leave it open and then there's a need and we didn't laser in on it and tie it more, down more. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, I will open it up to public comment. Is there anybody who would like to comment on this item?
Jeff from McConnell, 21758 Walnut Avenue. I brought up the ALPR, and I'll be speaking at the dinner on Thursday night also regarding that. And that falls heavily on the quality of life, and if you're following Facebook and social media, that's been discussed quite often, and I've had many conversations with Mr. Wolf and his predecessors trying to follow and track where cameras in general have benefited the community in catching these criminals, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm sure it'll be discussed at the dinner if you're going to attend. So I like to put, if you're talking about quality of life in Grand Terrace, and one of the biggest complaints is people are saying that, you know, Grand Terrace is going downhill. It's not so much because the crime is increasing, it's just that more and more people are finding out about it on social media. But still, I know personally, some that you've seen and some that you haven't seen, that cameras have helped solve crimes in Grand Terrace. And so I'm a big supporter of that, and I think just if the crime stats eventually start to crawl down slowly, that it'll benefit Grand Terrace in the big picture, including family safety and increases real estate prices and values, which of course makes more money for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Anybody else who'd like to speak on this item? All right, seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council for their remaining comments. Are you continuing to look for direction on this, Mr. Duffy?
Any comments that I get today, I will add to the lesson. My goal is that all of these projects will eventually come before the council. That's why I listed the funding, but some of them are easy fixes, and I can accomplish a lot of projects with a little amount of money, and more, some of them require more detail. So my goal is to bring all these back at some point in time when I can find funding. Except for the two items that we talked about, no wood chips and the billboard modification.
Okay. To add to the Richard Rollins Park, and I know we're looking at two separate things here, but something maybe for another time to consider is more trees around the outside of the play area, so that there is more shade. And I've seen an example of a soccer park in Ontario where they do have quite a few trees ringing the outside, and it does make it a little bit nicer for those that are spectators. But that doesn't necessarily go with this particular one right now, it's just something to think about for the future. But I would be focusing on, if we're going to use bond funding, that, to me, it goes for the core services that we need to provide and then going for the things that are nice to have. That would just be my thought. And to me, to look for the 15% that we would be looking at, I would like to see how that could go toward more of a major infrastructure project as it was intended when we sold the bonds. And that probably would mean either finding other matching grants and funding sources and working with other agencies. But those were just my comments. Any other comments before we move on? Mayor Proton?
I, you bring an excellent point about that these were bond funds and then we should stay close to the... So... Then we're going to have more next year, right?
Yes.
So I guess for staff's purposes, if we leave it a little bit more open-ended and we add the LPR and the infrastructure focus, then you know then how to bring those back, item by item. Okay, I'm in agreement with that. Do we know how much the ALR cameras are?
ALPR cameras are $15,000 per lane, and so he'll put two, he has two on Barton Road and Honey Hill, and he'll put two on Main in Michigan to start off with.
Thank you.
So we will move on from this item, if you have enough direction. We will move to approval of information systems support agreements. May we have staff report, please? And those keeping track, this is item eight on your agenda.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Proton, City Council. Before I use the staff report, requesting approval of an information system support agreement and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement. A couple of meetings ago, city staff presented an extension to the existing contract agreement that we had with the city of Little Melinda. They have been providing us IT support for several years. That agreement extension, they were requesting an increase from $65,000 to roughly $80,000. City council informed us that the annual amount for IT services proposed by Little Melinda was too high and directed staff to solicit proposals. So we did that, we sent the same proposal out to eight possible vendors, eight firms. And, you know, we requested the same services and we sent them the list of equipment items that the city of Little Melinda provided us. I requested that, so we knew all our servers, network, communication networks, PCs, printers. Of that, we received three bids. Onsite Computing, my tech team, and Sean McGavin. Sean McGavin is currently one of those that provides support through the city of Little Melinda's contract. As you can see, the first two proposals are very close in price quotes. And again, this is based on what we were requesting, same services that we currently have. Onsite Computing has had experience with a similar agency to ours. They currently support Riverside's LAFCO. They're also closer. My tech team is based in Los Angeles and Onsite Computing is based in Corona. They both will provide unlimited support from eight to five. But in the event that we need someone to come here and now, Onsite is closer. In addition, what I added to this is to make sure that we would have IT support during our council meetings until such that we can provide upgrades to the chambers. Something seems to always go wrong. So, anyway, I just wanted to add that everybody bid based on our existing, existing equipment that may or may not change when we get this upgraded or get other additional equipment. So staff recommends that city council approve the agreement with Onsite Computing, the lowest responsible bidder. Onsite Computing is here also. The president of the firm is here to answer any questions the city council may have. And that concludes my report. I'd also be happy to answer any questions from city council.
Thank you, Ms. Fortune. Are there questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Hesse.
Well, I have a question for Onsite.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Proton, and city council members. Thank you for inviting me here tonight. It's a pleasure to be back in the city. I'm the president of Onsite Computing, and I'm also a past resident. Um, I'm the president of Onsite Computing, uh, and I'm also a past resident of the city. So, um, and I'm excited to be able to provide reliable services for your IT support and IT infrastructure.
Yeah, well, thank you and welcome back, and, uh, and we still have vacancies in the city if you want to move closer. Um, one of the things is our server and our phone switch, or, or do you see, uh, when we'll probably need to upgrade that system? Are we still compatible, and we're not gonna have any issues with that?
Um, I'm going to do some assessments when we, when we come in, do some assessments of the equipment, the infrastructure, make recommendations. And depending on the age and, um, service and maintenance contracts on that equipment, I will, I'll make a recommendation, uh, whether to, um, continue to maintain those or if it's gonna be more cost-effective to, uh, to maybe replace the equipment, move to something more reliable, more, um, less expensive.
Okay, so that one, that'll just be a, a separate bill than your sixty-eight thousand for the upgrades?
Um, depending on what the upgrades are, we've included a lot, um, in our proposal, some onboarding and some project work. It's, it's already, um, some of which is already, uh, included. However, our, our goal is to, um, help support the, the city and its, and its members and to save the, the city money, um, and always, always spend and recommend to spend money when absolutely necessary. Uh, if it's gonna mean things are gonna be more efficient or, uh, there's gonna be a, you know, a, a, uh, advantage to the city by, by moving in a certain direction. Uh, that, that's our belief and, and our re, recommendations when we work with organizations.
One request, can you please make sure we don't get spam mail anymore? Because I'm getting a lot of that.
I will do everything I can possible to prevent any spam.
I think I'm a lottery millionaire, plus I wanna invest in some other companies and stuff. I get it all the time.
I promise that'll be one of the first things that we, uh, address.
Thanks, man.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Would you please state your name for the record?
Frank Barbarosa.
Thank you.
Sorry.
That's all right. I appreciate you being here tonight. All right, we don't have any more questions for you or staff, so we'll open it up to public comment. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this item? Seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion for approval of information system support agreement and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with council members Reinars, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Proton Robles voting yes, Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
All right, thank you very much. We look forward to your assessment. All right, we will move on to new business, finally. Item number ten, municipal code amendment seventeen dash zero two to add chapter fifteen point two six, electric vehicle charging station streamlined permitting process.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Sandra Molina, I'm the Planning and Development Services Director. As indicated by the mayor, this is a pro, proposed amendment to the city's municipal code to add chapter fifteen point two six for the streamlined permitting of electrical vehicle char, electrical vehicle charging stations pursuant to Assembly Bill one two three six. The purpose of the law is to further the state policy of promoting and encouraging the use of electrical vehicle charging stations. The proposed ordinance as before the council is consistent with AB one two three six. It will, um, establish an expedited permitting process and would apply to charging stations throughout the city, whether it's a commercial business that wants to add charging stations or your residence. Prior to becoming effective, an expediting permit, uh, expedited permitting and application process will be established, and staff will, uh, create checklists that will be available online and available to members of the public that are looking to install these type of, um, charging stations. Um, with that, staff recommends that the city council wait for the reading and introduce the proposed ordinance, and staff is available to respond to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Molina. Are there any questions of staff? Councilmember Wilson.
Director Molina, I just wanna confirm here, I see that there's legislative backup for this. Were there any kind of guidelines that could be handed out to the people that are going to be, um, applying for these, uh, applications so that we don't go through the process of, uh, well, I'll tell you that, uh, you know, we know that you need to do something, but we haven't quite figured out what's going on? In other words, I think it's a good idea that we're streamlining, uh, a program, but it appears as if to me that the state is not funding any of the streamlining, streamlining, uh, efforts. And if they actually want us to do it their way, then can they hand us a little piece of papers as this is our way?
Councilmember Wilson, the, um, state does have a, um, a plug in electrical vehicle infrastructure permitting checklist, um, and also a readiness guidebook that we can refer to. But, um, even more specific, there are a number of cities who have, that have already established this type of process, and we won't reinvent the wheel, we'll just borrow what they have.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Director Molina. Are, is there anybody in the public tonight that would like to speak? All right, seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam City Clerk, will you read the title, please?
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Grand Terrace, California, determining that municipal code amendment seventeen hyphen zero two is categorically exempt under section one five zero six one B, three of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and approving municipal code amendment seventeen hyphen zero two to add chapter fifteen point two six, electric vehicle charging station streamlined permitting process to title fifteen of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code.
Give a motion and second, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with council members Reinars, Hussey, Wilson voting yes, Mayor Proton Robles voting yes, Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
All right, thank you. Item number eleven, our addendum to the agenda. Stand interim childcare services agreement with Family Services Association. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Mayor, uh, Mayor Proton, City Council. Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager. Uh, before you is a staff report, uh, requesting another extension to the, uh, agreement we have with Family Services Association for the operation of the Track Care Center. As city council is aware, we've been trying, uh, between us and Family Services Association to comply with all, uh, requirements that state licensing has been, um, been ma, making necessary. And, uh, the, the latest ones is to upgrade that playground. And city council did approve that, uh, contract for playground resurfacing, and they did start yesterday. The intent is to do construction this week, uh, let the rubber, I think cure is the term, and it should be available by the thirty-first. However, it's still, the inspector still needs to come out and inspect that. So they're gonna do resurfacing, they're gonna do the canopy. The fire marshal has to come, clear his inspection. Then another state licensed inspector has to come after the fire marshal approves theirs. So what we are requesting is to extend it to September thirtieth, and I, I wish I could guarantee you that everything would be completed. However, in the event that is, it is not, we are also requesting city council approve city manager, the city manager to do a one-time thirty day after that, to extend it to October thirty-first, if and only if necessary. That concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions city council may have.
Any questions at this time? All right, seeing that, I'll open it to public com, oh, did you have a second? No, councilmember Hussey. You gotta, you gotta wave at me sometimes.
Okay, I'm sorry. On the extensions, I mean, will we start this in June? Just when they, they?
July, July first, yes.
So, we keep extending, so now, if it does open in September, so now they have a whole lease agreement for a year for September before they completely take it over in the city? Or are we going with the original date? Because they're, they're leasing it from us for a year. So are we staying with the original date from when we came across that lease, or we keep extending the date?
Y, y, no, we come with the original date, and what's happening is, um, they're operating, completely operating the facility. Um, we are collecting the revenue, taking our percentage out, and then get, taking the rent out, and then giving it to them. And so they're basically operating as a full staff. We don't have any employees, it's all their employees, all their staff. And we're just trying to wait until we can get the, the final go-ahead.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I will open it to public comment. Is there anybody that would like to speak during this time? All right, seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I will move to approve an amendment to the interim childcare services agreement to extend the agreement with Family Services Association from August thirty-first, two thousand seventeen to September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. In addition, authorize the city manager to execute the amendment to the agreement and authorize the city manager to execute an additional one-time thirty-day extension of the agreement to October thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, only if necessary.
All right.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with council members Reinars, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Proton Robles voting yes, Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
Mr. City Manager?
Actually, I have a few comments, uh, tonight. Um, one, basically, I'm going to be just kind of reminding the community that... There we go. Uh, dinner and the community. So this will be a meeting with public safety dinner and information session. Uh, our own Lieutenant Doug Wolf will be the, uh, guest speaker and entertainer for the night, and he'll provide staff with some data, uh, on this issue. And true important is that this is an opportunity for the citizens to come out and really get some data, uh, on the safety of Grand Terrace. But also, uh, mo, uh, also our city clerk will be available to provide them with, uh, input if they wanna learn how they can help increase the level of public safety service in this, in the city of Grand Terrace. So that's, that's Thursday, August twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, at six-thirty P.M. at Azure Hills Church. Lasagna spaghetti and salad will be available for, for dinner that night. The next item is, on Tuesday, October twenty-ninth, at six P.M., we'll have the groundbreaking for the dog park, city Grand Terrace Dog Park. Uh, also, Grill a Dog will be there, uh, that's the food truck that has hot dogs and gourmet stuff. Maybe a bad choice to get, but, you know, Grill a Dog is gonna be there to provide lunch. Not your dog, and lo, and dogs are also invited, uh, to come for, to, to the ceremony. Uh, and it will be at six P.M. on, uh, August twenty-ninth, two-two-seven-two-zero Vista Grande Way. Uh, right across really from, uh, the elementary school and, uh, senior center. And there'll be, uh, some flags leading into that direction. Next item is, come September thirtieth, uh, also the plug, it's a very important day for me, it's my birthday. Uh, Saturday, October the thirtieth, September thirtieth, will be eight A.M. to twelve P.M. You can bring your bulky items, those things that you can't put, fit in the trash can. You can bring your refrigerator, you can bring, uh, mattresses, couches. You can bring all those stuff to City Hall, two-two-seven-nine-five Barton Road, and Bertec will be here to collect those, those items. Also bring your E-Waste, that's that old TV, uh, with the, with the big back that some youngsters don't even know existed. Uh, and so that's a, a, a cleanup day on September thirtieth, from eight to twelve P.M. And finally, we had a little chatter on Facebook and, uh, some other, uh, similar sites about the sign ordinance and the signs in the city of Grand Terrace. One of the things we wanted to point out is that to show what a legal sign is, an illegal sign. And so, so you can, there's two ways to have signs in the city. You can get a, you can get a sign permit, but if you are a realtor, uh, if part of being a, a, a broker has the ability to put out twenty-five signs. But if the broker puts out a sign like this, that doesn't identify the broker, then it's not a legal sign, because, because we don't know who put out the sign, where it came from. We have a list of all the brokers in the city and, and their agents, so we'll, we'll be able to say, okay, we can leave this sign here. And so, uh, an open house sign with contact information is very helpful for us. A sign that's a nice sign, but with, with no information in terms of identifying the person who's do, who's doing the open house or the, or the real estate company, we, we deem that as an illegal sign. We have been, over the last six months, actually going to the locations, reminding the people, hey, are, are you a broker, are you, are you in the city, do you have a business license, and so on and so on? Some cases, they don't, and we remind them to do X, Y, and Z. In other cases, we, and just recently, we've started to, you know, pull down these things. And so we are gonna do a better job of communicating on what a legal sign is and what an illegal sign is in, in the city. Okay? So with that, that concludes my comments. Yes?
Mayor Proton?
There's still, um, chatter about yard signs, and I had a discussion with you about that they can put them inside their, uh, a car.
Well, they can, they can put them inside of the car, absolutely.
Yeah, so they're still saying they can't. They can also ask a neighbor, you know, that's in the vehicle, if, if they can put a sign on their yard.
Absolutely. If you give permission to, to put the sign in the neighbor's yard, you can totally do that.
And then I just wanna clarify that everyone who is a resident, whether you were on the city council or not, had an opportunity over two-year period to, to have input on the sign thing. So this isn't anything new. And I also remind the community that if you wanna have your stuff on the record, you have to come, but, put a letter to the clerk about the sign ordinance. You know, if you work or whatever and you can't come, you can have your legal input that way, or, or you can come to the meeting.
Yes. Yes, oh, sorry, Ma, Mayor, Chief, staff has a question for you.
Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, I, I just wanted to clarify one thing on the yard sale signs. Um, yes, you can put it on your car, but you can't go park your car down the street or on a vacant piece of property down the street. Just wanna clarify that for, for the public.
So if it's on a vacant, but how do you know whose car is whose? If they park their car, if I live on, on Observation and I park it on Palm, are you gonna run my plates to see where are my?
Um, so the, the vehicle, uh, cannot function as a sign, and so if you were to put your yard sale sign in your car, um, if you were to park the car then down the street, two blocks at the major street intersection to direct traffic to your yard sale, that would not be permissible. We did have an incident where we had a few vehicles park on Preston and, and Palm, and we actually had one go so far as to park, um, on a vacant lot at that corner. And so I just wanted to clarify that, um, that that would be a, a violation of the sign ordinance.
Okay, so if my car is wrapped, is that a violation of our sign ordinance too?
No, no, that's not. That's, that's a, a different provision.
Okay.
All right. Anything else at this point?
Nothing else. And I, I did wanna point out, though, that the question that Mayor Proton asked was about putting the sign in the car versus putting the sign on the outside of the car. And so I don't, uh, uh, well, I'll, I'll talk about that later.
All right.
Thank you.
We do not have a closed session tonight. So before I adjourn, I wanna remind everybody that our next regular city council meeting will be held Tuesday, September twelfth, two thousand seventeen, at six P.M. Agenda item requests must be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office no later than fourteen calendar days preceding the meeting. I wanna thank my colleagues for their discussion. We had some difficult items to talk about tonight, and, uh, and I know we didn't see eye to eye, but I appreciate the ability to have the discussion and the disagreement. Thank you to those who came out tonight and spoke and shared your concerns with us. And thank you to staff for putting the meeting together. We are adjourned.